Back in session. Speaker Ben, you're recognized on Bill Number 516-31.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill Number 516-31 COR be placed in the third reading file and like to just briefly explain the bill.
You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, first of all, I want to thank all of my colleagues for working with this process here in expediting a consideration, number one, that is required as a condition of the extension of the obligation of the ARRA trust fund accounts that was successfully pursued by the Governor through U.S. Department of Education so that we can continue to have that money available rather than having it returned to the federal government. And so I want to congratulate the Governor and the Board of Education and the management and staff of the Department of Education for working with the Governor and convincing him that this was a good thing. We all wanted to ensure that we obligated these funds and we are there. I mean, everything's in the pipeline. But unfortunately, as the Governor, I guess, we can say successfully predicted, we weren't able to obligate the entire amount. But nevertheless, he pursued a request to extend the obligation of the trust fund accounts to September 30 of 2013 on the condition that the local law that restricts it to September 30, 2012, of course, needs to be amended as well because that was a condition. So this bill does that, Madam Speaker, in Section 1, extends that obligation period to September 30 of 2013. In addition, Madam Speaker, the Board of Education and the management also requested that they be allowed for capital expenditure projects to be able to reprogram any excess funds in those object classifications to add to the repairs required at Antalan Middle School. They got STEM grants, they got regular ARRA funds, but the repairs required are a little bit more extensive than can be covered by that. So if they have any extra money from those object class on the capital improvement projects, they can redirect that to Antalan Middle School. The other request that the Department of Education is requesting is that in the personnel object class, they've been working overtime to implement the FMS system, the federal management system that was granted to them through ARRA funds as well, and they're now in the implementation stage. They're doing a lot of training, they're working after hours. And so this would allow them to use some of their appropriation from those funds to pay the overtime incurred by the employees to bring them up to speed working with the third party, Madam Speaker. In Section 2 of the bill, Madam Speaker, the Governor was also successful in working, I guess, revenue tax was successful in reconciliation of Section 30 revenues as they traditionally go back and look at what we were awarded and where we may have been shortchanged. And we were able to discover that there was this additional money in 2011 that really should have come to Guam as cover over for Section 30, approximately $11 million. The DOA or DOI took about $6 million of that and applied it to our promissory note basically that for overpayment that we're paying back. And then the additional money of a little over, almost $5 million, was remitted to Guam in this fiscal year, in the upcoming fiscal year. And so what this section does, Madam Speaker, is it recognizes that revenue now and adds that additional revenue to the total revenue of the government of Guam and makes those changes in the calculation, the arithmetic changes in the calculation then on all of the areas would recognize those federal sources of revenue and changes the total in the budget because we now have an increase of about $4.9 million additional money. And then, of course, Madam Speaker, the Governor had announced that he wants to use that additional revenue to pay income tax refunds. And in Section 4 of the bill, that's exactly what the bill allows then, appropriates that additional revenue over and above what was adopted in the budget bill of 4.8 to the income tax refund accounts for the payment of refunds as the Governor has indicated that he wishes to direct that money to. Section 5, Madam Speaker, was an error on my part, Madam Speaker, in terms of just reading and, as I mentioned, this section was a carryover section from previous budgets under restrictions of hiring of unclassified employees in the executive branch. And I was reading and I thought I was being a little bit more grammatically correct and didn't need to put in executive branch because of the authorizations contained in here. But it turned out, Madam Speaker, that when I took out executive branch, it meant that it applied government-wide to now include the judiciary, which they correctly pointed out to us and brought to our attention, and the legislature itself. The Governor, of course, is allowed to hire unclassified employees in his office and clearinghouse and then those exemptions that we built for hard-to-fill positions that we've traditionally authorized. But the deletion of executive branch meant that it applied to the judiciary and the legislature, and that was not the intention, Madam Speaker, and as correctly pointed out by judiciary, the restoring of the word executive branch brings this back to the original application of the law, Madam Speaker. And I apologize to my colleagues for that error. But it is necessary to ensure that judiciary can continue to pay its law clerks, its chamber clerks, those that work within the judge's purview that are needed in order to continue the administration of justice over at the judiciary branch. I wanted to also make one minor amendment, Madam Speaker, on Page 5, subsection B, the first line, to just remove the word "teaching" and it will be any academic positions at the University of Guam and the Guam Community College so that they are able to hire adjunct professors, contracts for these academic positions. Because some academic positions may not be classroom-related, but they certainly are academic in nature. And so the motion would be to delete "teaching" on line 1, Page 5.
On the motion without any objections ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Section 6, Madam Speaker, is something that every member of this body since the beginning of the budget had asked, what can we do and how can we help our institutions of higher learning, yourself, Senator Yamashita, Senator Rabini, every member of this body was concerned about that because it's been brought to our attention that the budget that we gave UOG and GCC were pretty much status quo budget, but we knew that GCC had increased enrollment, UOG has additional expenditures, we supplemented their budget last year to avert a student tuition increase, and the budget that was passed did not include that additional supplemental appropriation because we, quite frankly, were not able to identify funds. Between the time we passed the budget and today, Madam Speaker, there was an appropriation that was earmarked in this fiscal year for deposits pursuant to court orders under the consent decree with the federal management team for the Department of Mental Health so that they can have the federal management team avail themselves of these funds. We know that the federal management team will be relieved of its oversight over the Department of Mental Health, local controls being restored. Department of Mental Health, we fully budgeted them in this fiscal year, in the upcoming fiscal year, Madam Speaker. And there's additional cash within the federal management team's account that will be made available to Mental Health for its operations over and above its budgeted amount. That totals almost $4 million, almost $5 million, Madam Speaker. We know that we don't anticipate and I'm pretty confident that we're not going to, between now and December where the full transition takes place, that there will be no court order to provide additional funding since they have the resources at this time. In addition, Madam Speaker, we had a public hearing last week on the mental health fees. And so that, once it's passed, Madam Speaker, will provide additional resources to mental health to meet any of the additional requirements in order to restore total local control on there. And what this bill does, Madam Speaker, is then it takes that $3 million appropriation from this fiscal year and allows that to be redirected and re-appropriated to the University of Guam and the Guam Community College in the amount of 1.470,000 for each institution, Madam Speaker. And then a small balance of $60,000 is sent to the retirement fund because we just got notice also that they needed that additional money for Medicare reimbursements because they had a few more people apply for the Medicare reimbursement during the year and the appropriation that they received needed to be covered by an additional $60,000, Madam Speaker. And so, Madam Speaker, this does not add any new expenditure, it doesn't increase any appropriation over and above what is already authorized in the budget bill as well as in this fiscal year. It just redirects some of that appropriation to meet the needs of these institutions, Madam Speaker. And so those are the elements of the bill that Bill 516 proposes to enact in the law. And I certainly, Madam Speaker, wish to request all my colleagues' support on this as you've shown in helping us meet the needs of these institutions. And would like to move that Bill 516 be placed in the third reading file, Madam Speaker.
On the motion without any objections? To go down to third reading? No objection? Oh. Oh, you have an amendment? Okay. Yes, we'll take a minute recess.
...
Legislature is back in session. We're in the voting file. Resolution number 486-31.
Resolution number 486-31 COR introduced by Thiaa Munha Barnes, BJF Cruz, JT Wampen. Relative to voicing Elizabeth Turanguahan's, the Guam Legislature's continued support for the full implementation of Public Law 110-229 and requesting that the U.S. Secretary of Homeland Security, the Honorable Jenny Napolitano, provide for the issuance of a China visa waiver program through her parole authority and the issuance of a broader final rule for the Marianas visa waiver program.
Pro call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthardts. Senator Mabini. Senator Munha Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangalinen. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyran. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita.
Resolution number 486-31 received 14 ye votes, one excused absence. Resolution number 486-31 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 516-31 COR.
Bill number 516-31 COR introduced by B.C. Pangalinen, JT Wampen, EDD. An act to amend Section 3 of Public Law 31-40 to extend the obligation deadline of the IRA trust funds to amend Section 2I of Chapter 1 to amend Section 2.4 of Chapter 1 to add a new Section 14 to Chapter 11, to amend Section 13 of Chapter 12, and to amend Section 6 of Part 3, Chapter 3, all of Public Law 31-233.
Pro call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthardts. Senator Mabini. Senator Munha Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangalinen. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyran. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita. Senator Blas. Senator Duñez. Senator Blas.
Bill number 516-31 COR received 14 ye votes, one excused absence. Bill number 516-31 is duly passed by this body. Senator Rispicio. You're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we adjourn subject to the call of the speaker.
No objections or order. You're adjourned.